Read a little caption here, the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors encourages citizens' participation in public meetings through in-person participation, written comments, and/or remote participation by calling 1-844-890-7777, access code 390313. Additional citizens may view the board meeting live in its entirety at the county's YouTube channel, the link to which is provided on the county's website. At this time, I call the meeting to order. Harrison, I'll ask you if you'll do our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Please pray with me. Father God, we come before you thankful and grateful for who you are and what you've done. Lord, we lift this body up to you, Father, this county. We ask your blessing on us. Father, give us wisdom as we seek to make decisions, to be wise stewards of the resources that you've blessed us with. Father, I lift up each one here, everybody who wasn't able to make it tonight. Father, I ask just to hedge your protection around everybody as they head home tonight. Father, I ask that you would give us wisdom and discernment and integrity as we handle the county's business, Lord. We're thankful, and I ask this all in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Harrison. This time, I ask for any conflict of interest. No one? We'll move on to recognitions.
Recognization is an opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to recognize achievements in our community with focus on the accomplishments of students, employees, and our citizen volunteers who serve the county and contribute. The Board would like to recognize Matthew McMillan as Employee of the Month for November. Investigator McMillan is one of the most helpful people in the sheriff's office. When there is a project that needs doing or that others need help with, he is always the first person to volunteer. He will start a project on his end, and if he thinks it will benefit the office, he always has a positive attitude and never seems to fail. Transfer that to the rest of the office personnel. His teamwork is also appreciated, as his work ethic seems to help every member of our office strive to be more like him. We thank Inspector McMillan for his helpful, quiet, helpful spirit, hard work, and positive attitude. Look forward to working with him in the future.
Hello, it's Saturday.
Excellent, good mark.
Thank you.
Hey, what's up, pal? We're going over to the chair.
Um, I call it, um, loud enough. This week, Veterans Day, and we've got a number of county staff, even board members that are veterans of the United States Armed Forces. I'd like to recognize those individuals. First, David Ender from the Board of Supervisors. Charlie Hubbellson from Solid Waste. Mark Stevens from the Sheriff's Office. Jane Graves from the Sheriff's Office. John Johnson from the Sheriff's Office. Cheryl Stimson from County Administration.
Good show.
And Beadham Hensley from the Commissioner Reddys Office. Cindy Sands from Big Thum Witness. And James Taylor from the Sheriff's Office. We thank all them for their service to our great country.
All right, next we have our public participation. We have one. Neil Martin Braxton, please.
Hello, everyone. Neil Martin Braxton. This is Town Council Charlotte Courthouse. Not here for that purpose, we need county talk, you know, town talk. And I'm here because I'm also the president of three organization nonprofits that has three, uh, what I call, uh, affordable housing facilities here. They're called Timberlake One, Timberlake Two, you know, I heard them, and also Evergreen, which is a more or less a group home. I don't, I'm the president of this board. It's a HUD board, we follow HUD guidelines. One of the main things that they stress is they have a management agency. Those apartments cannot exist and function without the guidelines of HUD. Who we have for that is Crossroads, which I'm sure you guys heard of. But other than managing the administration and whether our apartments normally run living facility, other than managing it, that's all they really did, that's all we hired them for. Everything else, all the responsibility, all other responsibility resides on the board, which I'm president of, of course. So now that I kind of cleared that up, there's two separate entities, my board and Crossroads, two separate entities. The other point I'd like to make in my three minutes is that when finding this and we having trouble getting enough participation on the board. I've been on it for a few years now, and like, I'm from the town, Charlotte Courthouse, so it's a little hard for me, I'm getting a little overwhelmed by my responsibilities everywhere. Anyway, I'm asking the public, citizens, and the board, if someone, or many of you, if possible, if you have a little time, if you want to speak to me or Crossroads, which I manage the agency, about maybe joining the board, because we haven't, actually right now, we having trouble getting enough participation on the board. And without the board being following the guidelines of HUD, we basically get shut down, meaning that if it doesn't work, HUD pretty much pulls the plug, and somebody's out in the street, basically. So I just want to bring that to your attention, and just lend out a little acknowledgement that if anyone would like to join the board, you know, you can reach me at Town Charlotte Courthouse, 44 shooting. Just how it, Crossroads would be a good chance. Thank you very much for your time, and you can see it by, oh.
I have a question, you keep mentioning board. What specific board are you talking about?
Okay, so there's three apartments. Each apartment has three nonprofit companies. These are requirements of HUD that actually run and own the apartments. We actually own the apartments. So every organization that goes through HUD has to have a board, has to be elected. I'm elected by constituency, constituency among the board as president at this time. And without that, and that board, without the board, you cannot run the company that manages and owns the apartments. So look at, as any board, any board that runs a company, we have to have one, but when dealing with United States Department of Housing and Development, they're a little bit stricter than most places. So through the years, I realize there have been a few things that looked like maybe no one was doing. It was not that, it's just we juggling a lot at the resources that we have available, and they're quite limited. I have spoke with HUD in DC, I have done different, I have went different avenues trying to figure out how to address some of the issues that we're facing. A lot of it is dealing with, we don't bring in enough capital to help maintain buildings that are a little bit, that are a little old. I've been contracted, been on contract in three different states for about thirty years, and so I know all about buildings and upkeep and so forth. And the budgets that we have on one apartment in particular, which is Timberlake One, is actually, it's been a crisis since I got on board. And I have reached out to different avenues trying to come up with funds and ways to help renovate, help making a better living environment for the residents there. But I've been coming up a little short, honestly. There's just nothing out there that seem to be working too well, and I have tried. So that's why I extend that invitation out to everyone, so that if you were to come onboard and just come to the meetings, maybe you might have some insight that could help us facilitate what we need to be done. Did I try to explain that?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Questions? Have y'all tried to get tax credits?
Yes, uh, we're looking to tax credit. The thing about the tax credit, I can tell you from town end, because I've been through a lot of that, with the credits and things also, and from construction end, and I have looked at that. And what people don't understand, they might not tell you this, but tax credit only works if you have money. If you don't have money, it's not really gonna work. Meaning that tax credit comes in this way when you're already out there with money to spend, and then you get a tax credit. We don't have that money to spend. And someone might tell you differently, but if you get dumb to numbers, you can find out that's simplified for you just now. So no, it does not work for us.
Mr.? No, go ahead.
Question, I, most of us, Patty and I, I know, and I, a couple of years ago, kind of went through this, and, um, I guess what I would like to know is exactly who owns these?
Yes, and that's, oh, okay, clear, that's why I tried again. The three apartments is owned by three different nonprofit companies. And I am president of the board that runs those companies. And of course, we have president, vice president, secretary, secretary, so forth, so on. And all of us are just volunteers. There's no, no, no board, no county office that I, I hold. None of these, anything that you find me on, other than my own business to, you know, follow, it's gravy, is, is, is not, you're not, there's no rewards to it, other than rewards at heart.
I, I understand, I guess what I'm getting at is, I know that you're the president of those boards, but who actually owns them?
I do, we do, the board owns them. I know what you're asking, Crossroads, so for some reason, people have the, some, I don't know, some understanding or belief that Crossroads actually owns them. They do not. Like I said, if you come to one of our meetings, if you want to sit down and talk to me, I will show you the paperwork so you can understand, okay, yes, that makes sense. Because what we heard about Crossroads owning them is completely untrue. It's completely untrue. We own them, and we, meaning the board, we took all volunteers, three volunteers who get elected to this board.
Mr. Chairman, I think someone has a question from the.
Are you a 501(c)(3) corporation?
We are.
And what is, what is the name of your corporation?
Okay, uh, Ms. Moore, Dr. Moore, she can tell you the name of each corporation. I don't want to call them wrong, I just like to leave the name of the apartment.
And when do these boards meet? And currently, or do each of them have a different meeting time? What are the, what are the meeting dates?
Well, we have one meeting that happens on October, the election of officials that manage all of that. And the other meetings is normally about, uh, we have about four meetings a year, but I go into office to sign documents and things like that throughout the, throughout the year. You know, because HUD requires my signature on anything that goes, goes on in, in the corporations. They might, Crossroads manages it, but nothing gets sent to them without my signature, or whoever's president or vice president at the time. And those three companies, which she can tell you the names, so I won't mess them up, because I just like to refer to them as Evergreen, Timberlake One, and Timberlake Two, because that is the name of the apartments. She can answer if you like.
So you have three or four 501(c)(3)?
Three, only three.
Operating under one umbrella?
They operate independently, but we, we, our board represents each company. So we have our meetings, we have the meeting for all three, for all three companies at the same time, you know, simultaneously. We go through each company each, at one meeting. Each time we have a meeting, it's for all three companies, because as you can see, being a nonprofit, we cannot, it's not feasible to say, yeah, come in money for this company, which we, and then come in Tuesday for the next, and so forth. Like I said, this is rewards at the heart, so it's, it gets a little bit, uh, time, time expense on my time than anyone else's.
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna add, a few years ago, we had lots of complaints. There were broken windows, the facilities were not being well maintained, and I just want to say that I have not heard a single negative thing in the last probably year and a half. And when I've ridden by there a couple of times, things look tremendously better, so y'all are doing vast improvements to the facility. I know there was talk about trying to sell and do this and do that. Everything has quieted down, and, you know, at least from my perspective, things are running much smoother.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. And it is, and in part, because I, I, I've been there as president and was just a member in past few years, I've been there a while. And we have, well, Crossroads has went through a little bit of restructuring, which has nothing to do with our organization, and I do believe that's helped a great deal. And that's all I want to say about, you know, that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we've got the Board of Supervisors comments. David, would you like to talk?
Thank you all for being here. Congratulations to each and every one that was reelected. Glad we were gonna serve here for a while longer. To those of you all out there, thank you for being here, thank you for your time and effort. I understand where he's coming from with the saying that it's something that you do just because, and we appreciate that. Thank you all for being here to keep us accountable.
Jerry?
Thank you for being here, we appreciate it. And congratulations to all the elected officials, all incumbents, that's a blessing, so the makeup don't change. That's important. Just continue to be here so we can have, we'll have an opportunity to hear your voice and your concern as we address those.
Yeah, I echo the previous comments. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for the opportunity to serve for another four years.
I again would like to say thanks to all of you, thank you for your support, and ask you to continue to come out and see how this Board of Supervisors works for you and the county.
I would like to also congratulate the winners of the most recent election. It's a pleasure working with all of you all, and several times, see some new faces here tonight, and several times, people have presented issues that we were not aware of, that, you know, uncovered some work to be done, and it's good to have involvement, for sure. Thank you for coming.
Adessa?
Good evening, everybody, thanks for your attendance, and I would like to personally thank those individuals who voted for me on Tuesday. Thank you for the support. Thank you much.
Bill?
Thank y'all for coming, I appreciate y'all working with me to get reelected and everything, and just drive careful going home, deer running everywhere. Make sure.
Also, I'm glad to see everyone here tonight, and congratulations to all of the winners in the election, also our military personnel, president passed, we appreciate your service, we're gonna do. And I mentioned to some of the board members when, found that they were elected, they come on here, we're going to work now, get some work done. Thank you all. Next, consent agenda, any comments, changes?
Make the motion to be approved as presented.
Seconded.
And seconded. Bill?
Yes.
Adessa?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Next item, correction of the minutes, January tenth, twenty twenty-three. Doug?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in our research, the upcoming training offerings for Koya and FOIA, we discovered an error in the board minutes. The minutes, as shown on page eighty-one, from January tenth, twenty twenty-three, inadvertently omitted the term Freedom of Information Act training when labeling the type of train the board members were undertaking. The training included both Koya and FOIA training. We need a correction to the official minutes, which is Supervisor's Record Book thirty-five, page fifty-three. It needs to add "and" Freedom of Information, information training, and the recommendation would be to approve that correction.
So moved.
Seconded. Most made and seconded. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
She here?
Yes.
Doing the homework. Cannon?
Yes.
Adessa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes. All right, let's see, item ten, community partner update.
Mr. Chairman, Sarah Maddox is unable to be with us this evening, we will reschedule her for December, I hope.
Kevin?
That, we need to change that to a November meeting also, before we have to go back, and, as y'all say, September.
Very top of the page, the first thing.
Ah.
Just so we don't have to go back and redo a ten minutes again.
Good catch.
November meeting to order.
Yeah.
All right, correction's been made. And Kevin?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for having me today. My name is Kevin Fabian, I am the park manager of Twin Lake State Park, right down the road in Green Bay, Virginia. I'm here to just give y'all an update on the park, just for anybody who doesn't know, I'll, I'll do a brief park history and then talk a little bit about our economic impact. Mr. Jordan's gonna go next and talk a little bit about his park and the state as a whole, but I'll stick to, stick to Twin Lakes. Twin Lakes is, was the eighth state park in Virginia. We were originally constructed by an all African-American company, the Civilian Conservation Corps, back in the nineteen, late nineteen thirties, early nineteen forties. And then thanks to civil rights activists in the area, we became the first state park in Virginia. activists in the area, we became the first state park in Virginia that was open to people of color. Through the years, we went from being a segregated park, or two, from two segregated parks to, to one park, and then renamed over the years to be Twin Lakes. But we've got a really rich cultural history. I was talking to somebody else earlier tonight about the new visitor center we're going to be getting in the next few years. You know, the, the wheels of state government turn slowly, but we have been approved for it, and we'll be getting a lot of new exhibits, exhibit space to highlight the cultural history of the park. So come, come learn about it now, come learn about it when we get a new visitor center, and we look forward to having you out. But Twin Lakes State Park has a big impact on the, on the community. We, every year, we run, as a state park system, run an economic impact study, working with Dr. Vince McNinni of Virginia Tech. He looks at the system as a whole and individual parks to assess how they impact the local economy and the activity they produce. So just a few numbers about Twin Lakes specifically. We have about $5.5 million of visitor spending in the park, or I'm sorry, in the park area. That breaks down to about $3.3 million of local residents and $2.2 million of non-residents. So we're bringing in folks to, to spend that money. In terms of economic activity, which does include local resident spending, adjusted activity is about $7.8 million. And our impact, which does not include local resident spending, so that's just folks coming in from other areas to spend money, that adjusted impact is $5.2 million. Jobs attributed to Virginia State Parks from Twin Lakes specifically is 51.3. So depending on the time of year, that's full-time wage and seasonal positions. You know, you talk to people in the area, seems like just about everybody has worked at a state park at some point, that or, or one of the banks. But indirect jobs is 10.1, and then induced jobs is 9.7. So total jobs in the area is 71.1. I don't know who that .1 person is, but I'll have to find him. But 71 jobs. So that's a, that's a pretty cool impact. So those, that's a lot of numbers and a lot of terms that, I'll be honest, I don't understand all of them totally, but our total value added to the area that's direct, indirect, and induced is $4.9 million. And we're estimated to generate about $385,000 state and local taxes. So that, that is our money numbers. And just a little more firm for me to understand is our attendance. So our attendance has been going up every year for the past several years. We had a little dip in 2020. We were about 103,000. 21 is 117. Last year is 128,000, and this year, we've already exceeded that in, well, we've got a month and a half left about, but 129,000 visitors. So have a lot of people come out to the park, and a lot of those folks are coming from all over the place. I was just talking to some campers earlier today who were traveling down to Florida from Canada, snowbirds. So we, people from all over the country come to Virginia State Parks. We are a destination. But we enjoy what we do and enjoy being a member of the community. Appreciate all y'all's support in partnering with us for trainings and events. And I want to open it up to any questions y'all might have about the park.
What's the official closing date and the reopening date for the upcoming year?
So the, the swim area of the park closed after Labor Day. The rest of the park does stay open year round, besides the campground. The campground does close the first weekend in December and reopens the first weekend in March. Our Cedar Crest Conference Center, where we host meetings, training events, weddings, family reunions, that is open year round. It slows down a little bit in halfway through December, January, February, but otherwise, our shoulder seasons and summer are very popular there. The cabins also, our full housekeeping cabins, they have heat, AC, kitchens. Those are open year round as well and very popular this time of year. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Curiosity, does any of your trails connect with the Rails for Trails? What's this distance between there?
Depending on what part of Hybridge you are located at, we are 15 to 45 minutes, I'd say, away from various parking areas they have. Our trails unfortunately don't connect directly to them. We do have trails that indirectly connect to the State Forest Trails, so we're within Prince Edward Galleon State Forest, which is another 6,500 acres. It is in some of our long-term master plans to be able to connect to other local state parks, because we're fortunate to be so close to Hybridge Trail, Sailor's Creek Battlefield, even Holiday Lake over in Appomattox and things like that. So, but at this time, we don't own enough contiguous land to be able to connect to, to Hybridge.
Reason to ask, I've got some friends in North Carolina that were inquiring about it, and these people are connected with a group of people that ride horses. I've never asked the question, are horses allowed on the Rails for Trail?
They are. And to follow up with what Kevin's saying, as the crow flies from Orchard Road to Twin Lakes, which is the closest, it's about a mile and a half.
Thought it's pretty close.
It's partly forest property and then private property. But yeah, the horses are allowed on all 31, 42 miles of Hybridge Trail. They have to walk them across.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions?
All right. Well, thank you all for your time today. Look forward to speaking with you and seeing you out in the park. And I'll leave a couple of my business cards up here in case you'd like any more information about the park, or would like to ask me any more questions as you come up with. But thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel, please.
Well, good evening, board.
Good evening.
County administrator, county staff, and citizens. We're here to talk about your parks. When I, when we were asked to do this, I was like, how can I show Kevin up? Obviously, it's with PowerPoints and pictures. So take some notes, son. So, no, we're, it's a great honor and privilege to be here tonight and talk about the number one state park in Prince Edward and probably the state. But it is really something that Prince Edward does share, and you can ask Sarah Puckett to verify this, that we have more state parks in this county than any county. And so we have three. And it's a great privilege to work alongside Kevin. We share resources and time and effort and equipment and everything else, and also Sailor's Creek. And so, so it is, a lot of parks don't get that opportunity, and so we're thankful for that. But we're also very thankful for the support, the county, and the, the citizens that give us in state parks. And as Kevin mentioned, you know, it's kind of a rite of passage, especially Twin Lakes, that you get to, you know, you, you were lifeguard or worked the concession, and then you're, you know, I worked there because my brother or sister worked there, whatever happened. So, and I started in parks when I was 14. So, but enough about that. Let me jump into, so we're here to talk about parks, and I'm going to start, if you'd go to the next slide. I'm going to talk numbers. So these are numbers that Kevin and I both share. There's a little age on these, so they're getting ready to release the new FY '23, and we run July 1st to June 30th. So, you know, you're going to see an uptick on these. But right now, there's 41 state parks. We have two land bank, bank parks, Middle Peninsula and Mayo River. And so those are, those are owned, but there, there's nothing happening with them just yet. One in progress, so Sweet Run up in Loudoun County now has staffing in place. And so they're, they just opened. Faulkland Farms is down in Halifax County. It's going to make Stanton River State Park the largest state park in the state. A gentleman by the name of Tim Sweeney asked about, you know, if, if we'd be interested in buying that property, and it's over $12 million. And the state said, yeah, we'd be interested. He said, well, how long would that take? And then we said, you know, five, six, seven years. And he goes, I can't wait that long. How about I just give it to you? So Faulkland Farms came into Virginia State Parks two years ago, and they're, it's going to be part state park and part wildlife preserve with us, with heritage. So as far as budget, we're, we're sitting at about $52 million. So out of our general fund, is 45% of, of our budget, but it constitutes .6% of, of tax money. And the, the statistic I love is that every taxpayer, you pay, out of your taxes, it's $2.77 per person per park, which equates to less than $0.07 of tax money that goes to Twin Lakes or to me. And so, so we're thankful for that. Some of those, like I said, these numbers are a little bit aged. We're now a little bit closer to 50/50, looking at the, the most recent General Assembly numbers, but it still gives you a pretty good idea. And we're a good value for our money. But with that, total park attendance in FY '22 was almost 8 million people. And our economic impact for the state was $324 million. And so a lot of outside dollars coming in. Every dollar in the park generates $14.46 in the park. And as Kevin mentioned, these numbers are, are good, solid numbers with Vince McNinni. He does all of our analytics and statistical data. And then with that, we have 318 full-time positions, and that's with state parks, 1,654. So we really rely heavily on our wage staff to, to keep things running. And then volunteer hours, which the 214,000 hours, it's, it equates to 103 full-time positions, but that's way low, because volunteers do a really good job at hiding their hours, because they just want to come, volunteer, and get out of there. So, but we, we rely heavily on them. You can go to the next slide, please. For Hybridge Trail, what we're looking at is our budget for fiscal year '23 was $260,000. We, we made $93,000 in revenues. That was a 17% increase from the year before. And our economic impact with the adjusted was 9.1 million. I'm, the activity was 9.1 million of, of money spent. The impact average was 6.4 million, and it equates to 78.6 jobs. So again, and that's, you know, if you look at Twin Lakes and us, like, that's a big impact to Prince Edward County. And so we're, we're thankful for the outside dollars that are coming in. So if you go to the next slide, please. So some of those outside dollars comes from a lot of events that we do, that we bring in people. So this is our National Trails Day 5K. We do every, the first Saturday in June. And so we, this averages about 110 people, but we do get a lot of people, we at Locals, we do get people out of town. Next slide, please. The Firefly Festival. This has been gangbusters. I mean, it's an organic program. Some of you have been out there. If you don't, if you haven't, please come out. It's every Father's Day weekend, Friday and Saturday night. This program, in the two days, generated $18,000 in revenue. And that was with parking fees, with, with concessions, with T-shirts and stuff like that. And so it's been a, been a really great program. It's a heavy lift. It takes about 21 volunteers, employees to run it each night. So that's why we only do it two nights. Next slide, please. And then we have these knuckleheads that like to run long distances. So we do 350ks and 100k in, in, on the trail. And so the, this is the night train. It's every, end of June, every year, and they come out and they run 31.2 miles. People from all over the US, from Canada, come out to run this race. We had over 300 people this, this year. And they're staying in hotels multiple days, they're bringing family and support. So a great event. I love the, the runner coming across the bridge. It looks like a train coming down the track. And they, they, they start at 5:00 PM and they finish at like 3:00 AM in the morning. So if you're feeling froggy, come on out this next year. Next slide, please. And then some of the other events, you know, we did a gravel grind bike race, so that drew a different crowd in. We did the Farmville Five Blood Drive, so Twin Lakes was involved with that, and, and others. So we, we collected 36 units of blood. And so again, just trying to diversify what our, some of our programs are. And Three Roads donated a pint for a pint. And, and I tried to get Richlands to donate a pint of ice cream for a pint of blood, but they gave me half gallons of milk, which were a huge hit. Then we did our half marathon, which we, we had close to 200 people. We had an ultra 50k in October, and that had about 100 people. And then the freight train, so y'all have time to sign up, is going to be on December 2nd, and we have almost 300 people. And that's going to be 62.4 mile running. There's days I don't want to drive 62 miles, let alone run it. So, but a, a lot of activities and races on the trail. Next slide, please. And then I want to talk about our Friends Group. So this is our, our Friends Group, Aspen Hill Road. They have adopted the highway. And the idea was the visitor experience to our parks begin way before they get to the park. And so the Friends Group has adopted the two miles of Aspen Hill Road, and we're doing two cleanups a year. And each time, you know, with the, the transfer station on the road there and stuff, we get 18 to 22 bags of trash every time we go out there. And we got two TVs last time. So, you know, so again, the, the Friends Group is committed to the community and beautifying. And then, you know, the, the idea is, especially with trash, trash gets friends, right? It'll get a buddy. And so if we can help eliminate some of that and make the county look better, then we're better for it. Next slide. The Friends Group also purchased new trail markers. So we now have, we have every half mile marked. We did carcinite posts, like what you have on the address, but it seems that mowers really like to knock those down. And so these are recycled plastic, and they resemble the old, the old concrete markers that used to be there. So, and are somewhat still there. So we have all those in the ground now. Next slide. Pamplin. So I want to thank you all for the donation to the project. Appomattox County and Prince Edward coming together to make the parking lot happen. And so this is the, the finished parking lot up here at the Western Terminus. They finished that, and they, they, the town of Pamplin donated that to Hybridge Trail DCR in the last month. And so the, the, the parking lot is ours. We needed to add some, like pay boxes and stuff. And then, well, what's going to get to the trail, I mean, to the parking lot, a new trail? And I signed the contract this morning. And so we have a pre-construction meeting next week with Gecko out of, I believe, Charlotte Courthouse. It won the contract for just under $300,000. And they're going to run from Heights School Road all the way into Pamplin. And so that's a 120-day contract. So it's going to happen pretty quick that we'll add a mile of trail. And so, and just further connect. And out of that mile, almost all of it is in Prince Edward County. And so we're excited about that. But so thank you for your support of it. Next slide. And the visitor center. So I talked about this before, but we're a little behind schedule. It looks like December 31st is going to be the completion date for the building, substantial completion. And then we'll go through punch list and occupancy and all that. And then when we get the building, we'll still have some time to get furnishings and exhibits in there. If you got a next slide. This is pretty accurate to where the building is now. As we've talked about in the past, it resembles a train station. And so they're putting on hardy boards today. And so that's, it's a very nice looking building, and it's going to get us access to people. And then next slide. And if y'all are tired of eating dust going down the mile and a half, we will be paving the road at the end of the month. So Herrick Collins has been out there grading the road, and then we've also added an island at our pay box to make that a little bit nicer of an area. And so the, so the park, the Camp Paradise will be closed the week of November 27th for paving operations. It'll be closed the whole week while we do that, weather permitting. And next slide, I think that's all I have. That's what I have. So are there any questions at all that I can answer? Yes?
I'll just, admission of guilt here, when, you know, when we heard that we were going to pull up the railroad tracks and build a park, I thought it was a terrible idea, and nobody would ever come to see it. I, I just continue to encounter people who have come here from pretty far afield, just because of the Rails for Trails. And it's, it's, it's great. And good job. Keep it up.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we had 221,000 visitors last year.
Man, that's big.
Yeah, but I appreciate that.
I think, I think, so, you know, we're kind of rural. I think we forget just how urban so many people are, and they just love coming here for this. You know, they can, they tell me they can ride their bikes, they can put earbuds in, and they're not going to get hit by any cars, and they just can enjoy being, being rural American.
Yeah. And e-bikes has really, you know, we allow class one and two e-bikes now, and that's really been a game changer for people. So, yeah. Any other questions? Well, I appreciate you all having me. And by all means, if y'all need anything, want a tour, anytime, let me know, and we'll be glad to take you out there and show you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice report. Next, Mel Bemore, please.
Next, Ms. Melba Moore, please.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, County Administrator, audience, how's everyone? To answer President Braxton's, and there was a question regarding the names, is Housing Alternatives, Inc., that's the group home, Evergreen; Housing Opportunity, Inc., Timberlake 2; and Residential Opportunity, Inc., Timberlake 1. So those are the names of the property that he was mentioning that the HUD board is responsible for. And it is Crossroads who serves as the property managers. So good evening. What you have before you is just my update to let you know that I made it. Eight, 19 months coming here. It was all about, last year was all about reset, prepare, and move forward. Next slide. So I did this presentation for my employees because I wanted them to understand we are a first-class organization. And how we are a first-class organization is that we work together. It's not one person, it's all of us as a team, building towards this movement that we have. Next slide. So what I'm going to prepare, what I'm going to provide for you are the, just the steps. Preparation, first thing that I had to do was to do my assessment. I'm a public health professional. So I did my assessment to see just where we were. Were were the employees ready for change? We had to do a readiness assessment. I then moved our senior team to have a development training so that we could get to know each other, to really talk about our strategic plan, what we were going to do, and look at our mission, our vision, and our values. Next slide, you will see are the accomplishments. So as I've shared briefly previously, when I first came here, the first thing I recognized were the salaries. I I noticed that there was a little inequity in the rates of what we were paying. Plus, we were coming out of, the next slide would be accomplishments. We were coming out of the pandemic. And as you know, the pandemic did leave some scars. And the scars are hit, really hit the workforce. So we adjusted the salaries across the board. We increased the hourly rate. We went from $11 to $15 an hour. We've implemented our HR payroll accounting system. When I came onboard, our time management system was paper. We are no longer in the paper business as it relates to time management. We've implemented Microsoft 365. And we're currently conducting a compensation survey because what I want to do is to establish the plan. So employees will see what their pay ban is and how they will graduate up given their performance evaluation. This year, we are going to give a merit increase as well as a cost of living. So the merit, you can earn up to 3%, and the cost of living will be a 2% increase. We did go through some rebranding. In front of you, you should have a brochure that I wanted to make sure to really talk about Crossroads and what we do, to move away from some of the nightmares that you've experienced previously. So hopefully, we won't visit that anymore. We had our first community jubilee. We had approximately 200 people in attendance. We hosted our 50th anniversary gala. We turned 50 years old this year. Had a second all-staff meeting. And right now, we're doing, along with myself and the board, we're doing this assessment of property consolidation. You will learn more about that later on this month and in the coming days. Next slide, please. So where are we going? We're moving into modernization. Next slide, please. We're moving into, there are three focal areas for this year. Finance, communications, and workforce. So we've implemented a new telecommunications system where our telephones will now operate over the Internet. We're upgrading our meeting space. And the other thing that I noticed that was a challenge is this cross-organizational communication. People were operating in silos, so we're taking the walls down. And there's more engagement, more communication across, so we can have, reduce those silos. And then I'm going in quarterly, sometimes more than that, to meet individually with some of the staff just to hear what they're saying and then to share with them what the overall plans are. That sometimes that information gets bottlenecked, and it doesn't go all the way down. Finance, we've implemented a new accounting system. The old system, you actually had, my finance director had to go through two different systems to put together the report to submit it to the board. So we got the received financing from, funding from Department of Developmental Services to be able to implement our new finance systems with the with the intent to develop spend management tools and to increase our efficiencies through improved processes. Workforce is another area that we're working on. I shared with my board last month, we finally filled a position, a therapist's position, that had been vacant for three years. We, the substance use coordinator's position was vacant for 18 months. Just feel that. Where, when you think about, I describe this all the time. Crossroads, to me, I think of it as being in the middle. Because who I'm competing with is to my right and to my left. Employees will get hired in Chesterfield, Midlothian, Palatin. Crossroads in the middle, Farmville's in the middle. Or they're coming from Lynchburg, Appomattox, Charlottesville. So you see, it's that tug that we are all experiencing as it relates to workforce. So recruitment is a big issue for this year, and training, and again, that compensation survey. Last slide, please. Thank you, and are there any questions? No questions? That's a good report, Dr. Moore. Excellent report. Thank you.
Comment, thank you for what you have done. We appreciate the fact that you came in and have turned this around. Because I was on that board for a short while, and it was not, it was not very pretty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Thank you so much. Next, we address the Highway Matters, Sarah.
I had passed out before the meeting an email that we received from a citizen on Munro Church Road and the county's response. So I just wanted to call that to your attention because I did let that that citizen know that we would share his email with the board. So if anyone has any comments that they'd like for us to to reply to him, I'd be happy to to take those down. Otherwise, Mr. Frederick is not here. He'll be back in December. So I'm happy to record any comments or any maintenance or highway issues that board members may have.
Sarah, I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Muduski Road. Muduski Road was supposed to be considered as part of part of our project. I went on that road today. And how those people have lived on that road in that condition, I don't see how. David and Jerry, do you remember Scott saying that Muduski would be considered? Because we're trying to complete y'all's projects, and that came up as one of the.
Thinking to money, money, that was brought up, but I think that it was the money, so they didn't, we didn't add anything this year. Because even the ones that were on there weren't going to be finished.
Right.
The funds were cut in half.
Yeah, that's correct.
Dr. Prada, are there are there specific concerns? I mean, that's an unpaved road. And I know it's been very dry in recent months. So I expect it's dusty and it's not muddy, but it's dusty.
Right, right.
Is there something that you would like for me to ask Scott to take a look at specifically?
No, just to tell him to remember Muduski Road. He don't know the conversation.
Okay, and I, yeah, I expect we'll have a six-year-plan work session coming up in the spring.
Right, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah, on the bypass heading east on 460, the exit ramp, you go up to get on 15. Somebody took out the exit sign, it's laying halfway in the exit ramp.
So when you get up to the top to hang?
No, when you exit off of 460, it's laying in the ramp.
So it's the it's the eastbound ramp south of Farmville?
That's right.
Okay.
David, Jerry, anybody else? Anything you think of? Tell them you did a good eye, good job cutting the trees back on Fire Forks down to Buffalo Creek. But they turned around and went home too quick.
So you need them to go from Buffalo Creek to?
Up to where Stockton Lake is, all that's still on the side of the road.
Okay.
If they get that far, that would probably carries through the wind.
Scott, they did do a good job addressing that that road issues at my recent town hall. All those road issues been addressed. So that was, that's a good, that's good.
Mr. Chairman, you said from Buffalo Creek to Stockton Lake, and that is on Fire Forks?
Right. Right there, the Stockton Home and Hill, it's always grows out in the road.
Okay.
David knows, knock the mirrors off the truck. If you meet somebody top of the hill, you're either in the woods or hoping they don't hit you. Thank you, Sarah.
Sounds like congratulations are in order to the committee that was working on the school traffic.
Absolutely.
That is a good report.
All right, next, we're doing a public hearing.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
As the Board is aware, the Prince Edward County Schools has received a total of $1,763.12 and $12.93 of additional CARES Act funding for addressing unfinished learning, before and after-school programs, and other programs. Prior to the expenditure, in accordance with 15.2-2,507 of the Code of Virginia, the Board will hold a public hearing to increase the FY24 county and school budgets, accepting the distribution of federal funds and appropriate the funding to the FY24 county and school budgets.
Mr. Chairman, we need to open and close, open the public hearing. I don't know if we have anybody signed up, but.
Do we have anything on the paper, nobody called in? I don't think, did they show?
No.
That's a good way to open the hearing.
No. Okay.
Go ahead. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing then. Anyone here to make any comments? Anyone on the phone? Any board members comment? And like move to close. Motion made. Motion made and seconded, David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Thank you.
There's a recommended motion, Mr. Chairman, there for consideration by the Board. So move to. What you're at? Second.
Motion made and seconded, Bill?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Sure, well, we got you, item 13, Finance and Human Resource Report, please.
I have a litter prevention and recycling grant. Prince Edward County has been awarded a non-competitive grant from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for litter prevention and recycling program activities in the amount of $14,767. This grant is typically used to cover the expenses of recycling televisions and other electronic products through synergy. So we're asking you to appropriate this $14,767.
I move that the Board approve the budget supplement request and appropriate the same funds.
Motion made and seconded, David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trey Powell, Emergency Management Report, please.
Good evening, Board. First thing on the agenda here. Last month, the Board approved a mutual aid agreement with the county of Charlotte to authorize the county administrator to execute the agreement on behalf of the county. To expedite the process of developing mutual aid agreements with our remaining six neighbors, staff has requested the Board consider issuing blanket approval to the agreement and present, as presented last month, an authorization for the county administrator to execute the agreements with neighboring localities. Staff will continue to involve the Prince Edward Area Fire Fighters Association and work with neighboring jurisdictions on reviewing the fire department's districts to ensure closest departments may be dispatched to assist with incidents in Prince Edward County. Basically, this, we'll continue to let y'all know which ones we've executed as we go through that process.
Move that the Board supervise approved mutual aid agreement for execution within a neighboring jurisdiction and authorize the county administrator to execute the agreement on behalf of the county in Prince Edward.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
All right, item number two, EMS levy appropriations. At its August 13, 2019 meeting, the Board of Supervisors adopted the Prince Edward County Emergency Medical Services EMS District, which encompasses the entire county. The creation of this district enables the Board annually, Board to annually levy a special tax within the district. Any amount collected from such levy must be kept separate from all other monies of the county and shall only be used for the maintenance and operations of EMS services in the district as outlined in Section 50-42 of the county ordinance. On September 13, 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved the available EMS levy funds to the three EMS agencies in the county. Prince Edward Rescue Squad, Maheron Vonter Fire Rescue, and Hampton Sydney Fire Department First Responders, along with starting a contingency fund for emergency situations only. Examples, motor replacement, like we did last month. The agencies will be responsible for budgeting their funds for operations, maintenance, and vehicle replacement. The funds will remain within the county account, and invoices shall be submitted for payment or reimbursement. Currently, October 31st, we pulled the funds, the amount, there was $379,561.61 available in that fund. Following the formula that was come up with last time, we applied that to that of fund. Moving 100,000 to contingency, Prince Edward Rescue Squad gets 70% of the remaining amount, Maheron 25%, and Hampton 75%. In the chart below, you'll see that broke down and what the amounts would be. Seeking approval for the appropriation.
I move that the Board approve the fiscal year '23 budget supplement as presented above and appropriate the same funds for EMS need.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
All right, one one quick thing to add on. Me and Sarah were talking earlier today, and I know y'all aware of the wildfires out west. The drought line really hasn't made it much past the edge of the Blue Ridge yet, into that valley of Roanoke area. We do get updates from the National Weather Service with maps and drawings. We're going to continue to monitor that and coordinate with the association, Firefighter Association, if we do need to put a burn ban in effect for the county. So we'll let y'all know. All right, any questions?
Thank you, Sarah. Doug, Virginia Heartland Regional Industrial Facility Authority, please.
In your packets, a copy of the FY, excuse me, 2023 Audit Report. Virginia's Heartland Regional Industrial Facility Authority. The Facility Authority owns and operates the industrial park down in Keysville in Charlotte County. The audit serves as the annual report for the authority and is for informational purposes. In the past fiscal year, Eastern Engineered Wood Products opened their facility in the park. The project is located on a 32-acre tract. In the industrial park, it includes 22 acres of paid storage, including office. space, storage buildings, a cutoff shed, and rail spur. Eastern Wood distributes structural floor and roof systems to professional contractor trade through a network of retail lumber dealers and trust manufacturers. Facility employees, about 20 employees, will at full capacity. And Supervisor Townsend and I serve on, on that board, representing Prince Edward County. But we're required to have an annual report, and we just wanted to include a copy of the audit as part of that report for you this year. No act, no action required.
Thank you, Doug. All right, next you're up again. Doug?
In your packet, we've got a proposed legislative priorities list for the Board for the upcoming 2024 General Assembly session. Yes, the year has flown by. We've had elections, and before you know it, the General Assembly will be in session. We started and pretty much have left things, there's only one change from last year, but I'll go through them. First, highest priority is the 1% sales tax for local school construction or renovation. I've already spoken with Delegate Wright. It's my understanding he is proposing to put in that amendment for us, given some of the changes in the General Assembly. I'm at least hopeful maybe we'll get it out of committee and get it to a full vote on the floor. But I appreciate Delegate Wright taking the lead on that for us. Number two is allowing Prince Edward County to establish a solid waste fee. The, our pub, our properties committee has talked about the concept of having a waste fee to be able to help us make our trash funds self-sufficient and generate revenue where we're not having to pull from the general fund. There are a handful of other counties that have that authority and kind of like the 1% sales tax, even though if you get this language changed, the Board still has to adopt the ordinance. So it doesn't, it doesn't put into effect, but it gives y'all the ability to do that ultimately if you decide to do it. The third one is, this is new, it's an amendment to allow for extension of enterprise zone number 48. Currently, the counties of Prince Edward, Lunenburg, and Charlotte share an enterprise zone, and all three counties are going to be requesting that a five-year time extension be granted. Right now, it runs out December 31 of 2024. So that zone allows us to give grants incentives to businesses to locate. And part of our zone is, is out by the industrial park, but also part of it is downtown and helps businesses on Main Street. Really, with COVID, everything pretty much shut down for about three years. So we feel the, the extension is warranted and warranted statewide, and Delegate Wright, again, is willing to put that in for us. He's already talked to legislative services about putting that together. Bullet four is the Sandy River Reservoir Project. Again, asking the General Assembly, like they did last year, take any necessary steps to support that project and the provisional water and sewer from Prince Edward to the state facilities in Nottaway. And five is the, supporting the vacant legislative priorities. Those will be finalized this coming weekend, but obviously, a lot of that has to do with, you know, school funding and transportation, things like that. But we'll be able to get the Board a copy of that after this weekend's, on Sunday and Monday, they'll be adopting those priorities. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I was just going to make the comment that that 1% looks a little more promising now. We're glad about that.
Well, I, I think it's, it's going to be bipartisan support, you know, with Delegate Wright being Republican. I think, you know, if we can get Republican support and Democratic support, maybe we'll get it, like I said, at least through the committee level and get a, get a chance at a vote. We haven't had that the last two years.
Hope we can get it.
So the, Mr. Chairman, there's a recommended motion is that the Board approve the proposed 2024 legislative priority list as proposed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Bill?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
My vote is yes. All right, Doug?
All right, in your packet, this is item 17 on page 121. You've got a proposed FY 2024, 2025 budget agenda. We have coordinated with the school system on the budget agenda, and I think we've got things synced up pretty well. It's unfortunate, yes, it's that time of year again, we get to start talking budget. So, yes, you know, a few months in there in February, March, we're meeting about every other Tuesday, but like last year, I think we've got some towards the end that hopefully we won't necessarily need. But we recommend a motion is for the Board to approve that and the attached forms that are in the packet as well.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes, my vote. Item 17, we've done county attorney's report. Terry, Atkins Wilson, please. Thank you, Jerry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Congratulations again on the reelection, and nice to have a, have the Board all here. And also thankful for all the veterans that have given their service and signed on the line to put their life on the line for us. Anyway, over the last month, we've had discussion about the reviewing again the conflict of interest rules as they apply to the Board Supervisors. We, kind of a follow-up to last month, we had a clarification about small part that the county still owns and the IDA still owns on a piece of property that's being sold out there. So we've got that information straight, and so the county will sign and the IDA will sign for that small piece in the industrial park. Had a meeting, of course, this really involves more about the IDA, but about the Sandy River Distillery and their paperwork that was put in place when they, when they started out. We finished up on the memorandum, memorandum of understanding for the sewer line. We discussed that last month as well, but we followed up with that. Had some meetings with animal control officer. We're working on the, the ordinance of running, running at large, and so had some meetings trying to work on, again, slowly trying to update all the ordinances. And on Friday, we had a seizure of an animal who was in poor living conditions, and we have a hearing coming up on Monday with the animal control officer and the judge. Anyway, there's certain timelines that you have to do for the petition, and, and anyway, we have a hearing coming up on Monday that'll be there with, with Adam. Anyway, anybody have any questions, concerns? Anyway, being November in the month of Thanksgiving, I'm thankful for the opportunity to work with all of you, and I appreciate that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it. Next, item 19, county administrator's report, Doug?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, just a few things. Our 2023 tax bills for personal property and real estate are out. I know I got mine at my house. I assume you guys should have gotten yours. It's part of that mailing. There is a copy of the county's annual report that we produced this year, and a picture of our chairman in there and a statement from him. But that is out. Our school, elementary school construction grant, if you remember, Prince Edward County is eligible to receive up to 20% of construction funding for our elementary school project. Chairman signed a letter in support of that. That was submitted over to the school system, and they submitted the grant on November 3rd. So hopefully, we'll keep our fingers crossed that that project will be able to move along. This past Monday and Tuesday, our economic and development and tourism director, Chelsea White, myself, and our data center consultant, attended the DCD Connect Data Center Conference in Lansdowne, Leedsburg. They had actually probably close to 800 people there representing the industry, and I would like to say, we were the only locality that had a booth there and had, you know, image. We had a lot of foot traffic and people interested. We've already had, I think, two possible setting up site visits for them to come out and take a look at it. So I think it was very, very successful. Sandy River, our project team, I think by tomorrow, will be submitting our response letter. DQ had a 30-day public window for comments on our water permit. They received three comments, is my understanding, and we are sending a response, and I'll send a copy to you of my weekly report, addressing those comments. DQ will decide whether it holds a public hearing. I think if you receive 25 or more comments, it's a mandatory hearing, so it's not mandatory. So we'll see what they end up doing. Conference of Plan, we are in full swing on that project. On November 1, we put out our Conference of Plan survey. I believe I sent a copy to you. If I haven't, I'll make sure and I'll, I'll get it to you. But between November 1, December 31, we want citizens to complete the survey. They can do it electronically. We've got it on our Facebook site and on the website, where you can go in electronically and, and fill it out. We can send people, folks a hard copy. They can download a hard copy, print it out, and mail it in. Or if they don't have a copy, you can come by here to our office. I'm going to try to get some out to the library as well. Our goal is to get to 15-plus percent of our population to return the survey. So we have some good, meaningful data on, you know, what we need to be concentrated on as a community for improvement, where growth should be targeted, what types of growth that you want to see, what types of housing that you want to see. Our first public workshop will be held next Thursday, November 16, 6:00 p.m. at the Crawley Forum out in Hampton Sydney. We have gone ahead and advertised that it's a Board and Plenary Commission meeting, so if, if all of you want to show up, you're okay, if you want to do that. But we'll also have one on December 13 here at Moton, so there'll be a number of opportunities. And we're, we've got to add in the paper, it was in the paper today, trying to encourage the public to attend if they can. If you can't make it, that's okay. Fill out your survey, and we'll have a number of, of meetings down the road for folks to be able to attend as well. I was on kicking country this morning talking about the comp plan, and I'll be on call flow tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock talking about it as well. Just trying to help get the word out, get people interested in participating in the process. I think this is probably the, the most public input we will have had in development of a comp plan. So we'll keep our fingers crossed anyway. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Let's throw any questions.
In a comment, this, this folder of information that was sent out with the tax bill, I've had numbers of people call and said, I didn't even know you was on the Board of Supervisors. Paying attention to it anyway. My 11-year-old grandson was one of them.
That's a way to stay under the radar.
Yes, I guess. Next, Personnel Committee report. Sarah, please.
Staff met with the Personnel Committee on October 31st to discuss a situation that we have in the Department of Animal Control, and Adam is here, and the members of the Personnel Committee are also here, so I would encourage y'all to jump in. And, but in summary, we, we have a, I'm going to call it an interesting situation in animal control. We have our full two, two full-time officers, and then we have the one part-time kennel attendant position. And we all know what that individual does, and they work five days a week. It's part-time, 29 hours a week. It is not the most desirable position in county government, and it is terribly difficult to keep that position filled in a part-time capacity. And when that position is vacant, our full-time officers have to pick up those duties for the, the care and the cleaning of the shelter and the animals. And those are time-consuming. And since COVID, the, I'm going to say, the consumption of animal control as a county service has increased significantly. And I don't know if that's because people got dogs during COVID when they were home, and then when they went back to work, they discovered that they couldn't keep them, didn't keep them. But Adam and Ariel are very popular county employees in terms of the calls they get. And so the cycle that we are in is with the vacancy in the part-time position, having two officers, having more demand on their services, essentially, we don't have enough man-hours to go around. And when, and when they are on duty, one of them is on call. So if there's a, an after-hours call, a weekend call, an emergency, at any time of the day or night, if the sheriff's office needs animal control support for one of their operations, one of those two officers who may have started the morning at 7:00 a.m. in the shelter can get called out. And we, we've gotten into this relentless cycle. So we went through everything pretty thoroughly with the Personnel Committee, and we really believe, especially with the imminent plans of moving, you know, to the construction of a new shelter, that this is the opportunity for us to go ahead and talk to the Board about making that part-time position full-time, which would make it a more readily marketable position, and also have that, the kennel attendant is not a full-time job, but what we would do is have the remaining hours of the work week of that third position be, in the beginning, an officer in training. They'd have to work with Ariel and Adam to learn the job, and for Ariel and Adam, or Adam to be confident that he can send them out independently to work with citizens and work with animals. And then hopefully, we would get to the point where we could send that individual to the academy, and then that would allow us to expand the coverage and have seven-day-a-week coverage in the county for animal control, so that every weekend, two officers could have the weekend off, and not, you know, kind of this ongoing cycle of earning comp time, trying to use comp time, getting called in, and never really being off. And they both have in excess of 100 hours of comp time here at the end of the year with probably very little ability to use it, and the maximum carryover is 40 hours a week. They rarely can use their comp time in the week that they earn it, which means it becomes time and a half. And all of that becomes a cost to the county. So in, you know, in the long run, I think we've reached the, the position where we know that we'll better serve the citizens and the needs of the department and not burn out our two officers by bringing this third position to full-time. And so with that, with Cheryl's help and Doug's review, we have determined that in order to transition to the full-time position for the remainder of this fiscal year, we would ask the Board to appropriate $10,000, and that would enable us to go ahead and advertise, and then the Board could work with that position in the budget for the FY25 budget.
So moved.
Motion made?
Second.
And seconded. Bill?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I will say, if you have any questions about what's going on in animal control, Adam is sitting quietly with his fingers crossed in the back. He's happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. My vote is yes also.
We're ready for picking up extra duties.
Adam, I see you all on 15, back and forth all day today.
Yeah, we stay busy.
Good, good. All right, next, we need to go into closed session, I do believe.
Yes, you're on page 137. There's a proposed motion in the middle of the page.
I move that Prince Edward County Board Supervisors convene a closed session for discussion and consideration of annual performance of county administrator, county attorney pursuant to the exemption provided for in Section 2.2-3711A1 of Code of Virginia, and the consultation with legal counsel regarding the provisions of legal advice by such counsel related to an unsolicited proposal or intergovernmental contract pursuant to the exemption provided for in Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Bill?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Remove to closed session.
Yes.
My vote is yes. Remove to closed session.[593.32]
Move, motion made, you second it, David?
Mr. Chairman, warehouse precinct county board supervises convening closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmed and affirmed recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and warehouse section two point two dash three seven one two of the code Virginia requires certification by the board that such closed session was conducted in conformity now therefore being resolved the board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed session to which this certification applies and only such public matters as were identified in motion by which the closed session was convened were heard discussed considered by the board.
Any members who believe that there was a departure from the requirements, clauses, and shall state the status of the departure, that is whose judgment has been taken place, such statements will be recorded in a minute. We need a roll vote now.
Because of the way this is worded this time.
We need a vote to that motion first.
Yes, okay, vote to the motion.
Which would be no.
To the motion would be...
The motion would be yes.
To the motion would be yes. To the certification. Yes, to the certification.
So is it my turn to say yes?
Correct.
All right, Patty? My vote is yes.
Wait, wait just a minute, now, now, read, read your, well, you can just ask, you can ask if any member, if there was any departure. Yeah. And I'm gonna start with that and say no. No.
Jerry, Harrison?
No.
Patty?
No.
And Patty?
No.
Boudes?
No.
My vote is no.
All right, we're good, we're good.
Barely.
I'll run off the road there for a minute.
That's all right. We made it through. We got here.
Now, what else have we got here? Information?
Like everything else is information.
We don't, we could read over that. Board emails, media reports, any discussion on that? A motion re-adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
You didn't even second it. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
My vote is yes.